Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of June 14th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is approval of the City Council conference minutes of October 26, 2021; City Council conference minutes of January 25, 2022; City Council Norman Utilities Authority minutes; Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of April 26, 2022. I need a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Proclamations. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of July, 2022, as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been... Cast? Sorry. My brain went dead. Our votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of July, 2022, as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Norman. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the City of Norman. And whereas our Parks and Recreation facilities are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and protect habitat for wildlife. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And now therefore I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of July, 2022, as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Norman. I would now like to recognize Commissioner Isaacson to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Park Board and make a few comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council members. I am proud to accept this proclamation. Since 1985, America has celebrated July as the nation's official Park and Recreation Month. Created by the National Recreation and Park Association, the NRPA, Park and Recreation Month specifically highlights the essential and powerful role local park and recreation professionals, such as our outstanding staff at Norman Parks and Recreation, play in building stronger, more vibrant, and more resilient communities all across the country. This July, we are bringing attention to how important it is to rise up and support the field of parks and recreation, because every day, park and recreation professionals, like our staff at Norman Parks and Rec, excuse me, rise up for their communities in service of equity, environmental stewardship, and overall health and well-being. In Norman, you can celebrate Park and Recreation Month by joining Norman Parks and Recreation Department at one of their planned special events. The 47th Annual Westwood Golf Invitational, the weekend of July 2nd to the 4th; Norman Fourth Fest at Reeves Park, beginning at 5:00 PM on July 4th, fireworks at 9:45; the At Legacy Concert Series, featuring JB and Friends, on July 15th; outdoor movie series, featuring Disney's Jungle Cruise at Westwood Family Aquatic Center, on July 16th; we're going to have a scavenger hunt in July; we're also going to have pop-up parks during the month of July. So for more information, visit normanparks.com. And thank you very much.
Item three is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming June 20th through June 26, 2022, as Pollinator Week in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming June 20th through June 26, 2022, as Pollinator Week in the City of Norman. Whereas the City of Norman is home to many native wildlife and pollinator species, such as birds, bees, and insects, which keep our environment healthy and biodiverse. And whereas the City of Norman recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems, and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. And whereas the City of Norman is working to build a healthy, sustainable, and wildlife-friendly community that brings the many benefits of nature to all corners of our community. And whereas pollinators play an important role in maintaining a healthy ecosystem, and in urban communities, pollinators play a crucial role in maintaining sustainable urban agricultural, local community gardens, and residential landscaping. And whereas pollinator species are in decline due to habitat loss and the use of pesticides, causing many species to decline significantly in the past 25 years. And whereas National Pollinator Week is a national initiative that offers opportunities to individuals and communities to help restore native habitat, support local pollinator species; and whereas the City of Norman will continue to support local, state, and national efforts that protect, restore, and conserve habitat for pollinators, as well as foster a greater connection between residents and wildlife. Now therefore I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim June 20th through June 26, 2022, as Pollinator Week in the City of Norman, and encourage our residents to make a difference for pollinators in our community by taking part in activities to bring awareness to and protect our invaluable pollinators. I'd now like to recognize Voncel Harmon to accept the proclamation and make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and thank you, City Council members, and thank you, Norman city staff. As you know, pollinators usually don't travel alone. I do have a few people with me. You know, when I moved to Norman nine years ago, I marveled at the city's ability to balance the infrastructure needs of a major university and a thriving business community, as well as supporting the green spaces, the streams and the creeks that make Norman unique. And I knew I had landed somewhere that was not only home to wonderful people, but also to spaces, safe spaces, for the creatures and features that I really love. I realized sometimes that balancing act is tough, and Norman doesn't always get it right. But when you have champions, such as the people standing behind me, and dedicated leaders, and city staff, I know that balance is possible. We're happily accept the Pollinator Proclamation, Week Proclamation, on behalf of the citizens of Norman, and we thank you for recognizing the ecosystem contribution that the smallest creatures make to the pollination of our food, our flowers, and our trees. Without them, we would not be able to enjoy the unique benefits that provide our unique community and to our planet. We hope all Norman residents will join us to schedule of events. If they'd like to know more about those, they're on greennorman.org. And we hope that everyone joins us in this schedule of events. Michelle and I, this evening, have Norman's most dedicated pollinator champions. You may know them by seeing them peeking at you out of our creeks, out of our bushes, out of our trees, sometimes at night. Maybe I shouldn't have admitted to that. But with champions like these, and I know there are more champions like that out in Norman, that we're going to continue to make Norman welcoming for even our smallest creatures. Thank you.
You and I can stand right here and have your army of pollinators behind us.
Item four is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Sunday, June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth Day in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Sunday, June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth Day in the City of Norman. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring that all persons held as slaves should be free. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas, with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas June 19th, known as Juneteenth, and also called Emancipation Day, is the oldest-known celebration, which started in 1866, commemorating the announcement of the abolition of slavery in the state of Texas, and in remembrance of the day all remaining slaves acquired their freedom in the United States of America. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Joseph Biden signed Juneteenth into law, declaring it a national holiday. And whereas Juneteenth reminds us of the promises of freedom, equality, opportunity, and the celebration of Black freedom, culture, and achievements made. And whereas the Juneteenth Festival will take place on Saturday, June 18th, in the City of Norman at Reeves Park, and it will provide a community event of celebration and inclusion, bringing together families, visitors, and local officials to celebrate this national holiday. Now therefore I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Sunday, June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth in the City of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating this important holiday while continuing to strive towards full equality. And I'd like to recognize George Wesley to accept the proclamation and make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I thought all day of what to say, because this is a very special honor. My father was born in 1933, and I'm going to try to get through this. He's going through dementia, and we just found that out. But I think about the things that he went through, and I think about the things that he's seen, the things that he's achieved, and the things he's failed at. It has gotten us all to this place, and that means everybody. I accept this in his honor, but I also accept this in the honor of my wife, who could not be here today. She is getting her administration degree for her master's. And I think about how she is trying to excel herself, to be better. And she wants to be better for the City of Norman, as she is the Norman PTA Council president, as tomorrow she's going to the National PTA Council Convention. She's on the National Council. So she wants to make every kid in Norman feel accepted, feel equal. So I accept this in his honor and her honor, and I thank you very much.
Now on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends that items five through item 27 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items five through 27 on the consent docket. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to place items five through 27 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been... ...through 27 were placed on the consent docket.
Thank you. Item five, ordinance 2122-42, upon first reading by title. Rezoning property located at the northwest corner of Imhoff Road and Oakhurst Avenue from the PUD, Planned Unit Development District to... To PUD, Planned Unit Development District. All right. Item six, ordinance 2122-43, upon first reading by title. Granting special use for a church, temple, or other place of worship in the R3 multifamily dwelling district located at 494 Elm Avenue. Item seven, ordinance 2122-48, upon first reading by title for a franchise agreement with Oklahoma Gas and Electric Company, subject to approval of the voters on January 10th, 2023. Item eight, nominations for appointment of Drew Nichols as presiding judge, Gail Blaylock and Blaine Nice as associate judges, and David Porch as acting judge of the Municipal Criminal Court, each for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2024. Mayor's appointments as follows. Citizens Oversight Committee for TIF Number Two, Joshua Aggerson, Ward Five; Bill Wilson, Ward One; Paula Price, Ward Three; Economic Development Advisory Board, Haley Hopper, Ward Four; Josh Hinkle, Ward Eight; Human Rights Commission, Dr. Benbin Wing, Ward Eight; Public Art Board, Cody Giles, Ward Two; Social and Voluntary Services Commission, Scott Meyer, Ward Three; Tree Board, Darrell Janaway, Ward Three. We also have Ryan Broyles, Ward Four, for the Economic Development Advisory Board, and Kristi Shepherd, Ward One, for the Social and Voluntary Services Commission. Thank you. Item 10, a donation in the amount of $2,658 from Gamma Kappa of the Kappa Sigma to the fire department. Item 11, granting an easement to OG&E for the purpose of relocating pad mount transformers at Porter and Finley Avenues. Items 12 through 17, the following six items are acceptance of easements donated by a permanent public sidewalk and utility easement donated by Norman Regional Hospital Authority for the Porter Avenue Streetscape Project. Item 18, expenditure number two to the on-call contract with Pinnacle Consulting Management Group, Inc. in the amount of $74,500 for right-of-way acquisition for the Jinkin Avenue widening project from Imhoff Road to Lindsay Street. Item 19, an inter-agency agreement with the Oklahoma Conservation Commission for reimbursement up to $4,000 for educational signage produced and installed by the City of Norman. Item 20, acceptance of a fiscal year 2021 and 2022 Surface Transportation Block Grant in the amount of $959,855 from ODOT to be used to purchase two 35-foot CNG transit buses. Item 21, a project agreement with ODOT for the Norman Forward James Garner Avenue Project, Phase II, Acre Street to Flood Avenue. Item 22, a project agreement with ODOT for the Gray Street Two Way Project. Item 23, project agreement with ODOT for the Porter Avenue Streetscape Project. Item 24, a Norman Utilities Authority Resolution appropriating $40,000 from the Sumer Maintenance Fund to be used to replenish accounts for fleet parts and auto repair accounts, and to complete installations, repairs, and restorations for the remainder of FYE 2022. Item 25, a Norman Municipal Authority Resolution appropriating $28,159.72 from the Westwood Fund Balance for a leak repair at the Westwood Family Aquatic Center. Item 26, a Norman Utilities Authority Resolution appropriating $24,000 from the Water Reclamation Fund Balance to be used to purchase polymer for de-watering for the remainder of FYE 2022. Item 27, a resolution authorizing joint petition settlements of two workers' compensation cases filed by Christopher Kozinski. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket?
I just want to make a little bit of clarification with the Imhoff. I know it's the first reading on that, but where they're moving from a PUD to a PUD. Just so that everyone understands what's going on, this was approved in 2012 for an apartment complex, and they technically don't have to come back to council and ask us if they want to put an apartment complex on that area. So right now, what they're proposing is moving, instead of building an apartment complex, building single-unit developments, and putting roughly 100 homes versus over 300 units in an apartment complex. So that's what this is for. And I also want to say, I know we don't have announcements, but it's your last council meeting, and we will miss you, and I know we're not supposed to say it.
Okay, all right. Item 20, wait. Yep. Councilmember Schuler?
I just wanted to make note of the Ward Two member for the Public Art Board, Cody Giles, and just wanted to thank him for his service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments from council, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the consent docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item 28, ordinance 2122-47, upon second and final reading. Implementing amendments throughout the Center City Form-Based Code, CCFBC, document and declaring an emergency. I entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to move.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Logan Hubbell, our planner, to make a presentation.
Hi, I'm Logan Hubbell with the Planning Department. So just as a bit of a background for the Center City Form-Based Code, it's a code that's based primarily on form rather than use, like a zoning code might be. Prior to 2017, when the Form-Based Code was originally adopted, we were getting these duplexes in this area that had six to eight bedrooms per side, and a lot of people were pretty unhappy with them. And so the City Council enacted this Center City Form-Based Code that promotes a more like townhouse development. So you know, we still will get density down there, but it is at least a, at least it looks nicer. And the idea was for them to be kind of like brownstones, like you might see in New York. And the form has generally improved since then. But we wanted to come back now and make some more changes to make the code easier to administer. Because really, anytime anyone proposes anything that's not really cut and dry and by the book, it can take us hours to look it over and figure out how we're, you know, how we're supposed to rule on it. And so then, while making those ease-of-use changes, we also decided to make some other changes to continue improving the quality of the projects that are constructed here. And so this slide, I have a list of some of the major changes, and I'll go into more detail on these on the following slides, but I'll go ahead and read through these. So the townhouse/small apartment and neighborhood middle frontages are becoming the urban residential frontage. The urban residential frontage is becoming more flushed out. We've added a new maximum height and a new unit minimum map. We've added new unit minimums in the urban general frontage, or increased them, rather. We've removed the unit maximum in what was formerly the neighborhood middle frontage, and we've added new parking requirements. So on this slide, on the left, you'll see the currently adopted regulating plan, and on the right is the regulating plan and the draft document. So the yellow area is detached frontage, which protects the single-family neighborhood and remains almost entirely unchanged. The orange area is urban general frontage, and structures there can be between two and five stories tall, built close to the front property line and on each side property line. The ground floor can be either residential or commercial, and each structure must contain at least three residential units. The red area is urban storefront frontage. Structures here are built to the urban general building form standards, but commercial is required on the ground floor. The small orange area that is to the southwest in the original map, along University Boulevard, is urban residential frontage. Structures there are built to the urban general building form standards, but residential is required on the ground floor. The blue area on the left map is townhouse/small apartment. Structures there can be between two and three stories tall, must have a finished floor elevation of at least 36 inches, and are built from property line to property line. Each structure must contain at least three residential units. The pink area on the left map is neighborhood middle frontage. Structures there can be one or two stories tall with a maximum of two residential units. Structures have a five-foot side yard setback, like you might see in suburban neighborhoods. And so as part of our efforts to make the document easier to use and administer, we took a look at these different frontage types. The product being built in the blue townhouse/small apartment area is almost identical to the product that were received, that's being built in the orange urban general area. Meanwhile, the pink neighborhood middle area requires a much lower level of density than the rest of the Center City Form-Based Code area, and that is despite the fact that it is closest to campus. The proposal put forth by the Planning Department and the Ad-Hoc Committee involves combining the existing blue urban townhouse/small apartment and pink neighborhood middle areas into the existing urban residential frontage type. The purplish color, which we call periwinkle, on the map, on the right, represents this new urban residential frontage. Urban residential allows staff to focus on fewer individual frontages, and it increases density near campus, where housing is needed the most. So urban residential follows the urban general building form standards, but it only allows residential uses. And so we also wanted to, we didn't want to just take the urban residential that was in the previous code. We also wanted to carry over some of the ideas from the townhouse/small apartment and neighborhood middle areas from the previous code. So we changed the finished floor elevation to 14 inches. It had been three feet in the townhouse/small apartment and neighborhood middle frontages, and so we wanted to lower that to 14 inches, but not all the way to zero, like it is in urban general. And that, so we thought that was a good medium, because the, a three-foot finished floor elevation requires a 36-inch ramp for an accessible unit. And so, and that's, that can be really difficult for developers to find space for that, especially when they're, you know, when they're really trying to maximize the property. In addition, we added in an allowance for courtyards, which was previously allowed in the neighborhood middle frontage area, but not in the townhouse/small apartment or urban residential areas. And that's because council previously, a few months ago, approved during the admin delay, a project that I think most people liked pretty well, that had a courtyard. And so we definitely wanted to retain the ability to have courtyards. Moving on, another change we made outside of urban residential is the, this new maximum height map. So this map shows the maximum allowed number of stories in each block. We added this map primarily to make it easier for developers who are new to Center City area to understand the code. So all the yellow, orange, and red heights remain the same as in the currently adopted code. In the periwinkle urban residential area, north of Duffy, some heights were increased to five stories from a previous maximum of three stories, but they do still gradually stair-step down to that single-family neighborhood. All frontage types here allow for developers to build as few as two stories. And the C3 properties, at the time of CCFBC adoption, have no height limit. And so that's primarily along Main Street, but that was, that's been part of the code from the very beginning, and that was still retained. So the other new map we added is this unit minimum map. And so this one looks very similar to the maximum height map, but it actually shows the minimum number of residential units that must be built on each parcel. So it was kept the same in all areas. It was, it's really mostly just a tool for ease-of-use. The only area it was changed in was the orange urban general. So the urban general unit minimum was changed to one less than... So the urban general unit minimum was changed to one less than the maximum building height. So in areas with a maximum building height of five stories, a developer must build four residential units. And then, as we did increase it a little bit, we wanted to add a little bit of leeway. So the urban general and urban storefront structures, so that's the red and the orange, developers can count a commercial unit toward the residential unit minimum. And that, you know, so that's to, while we are wanting more density there, we're also wanting to promote the mixed-use or commercial development. South of Duffy, in the urban residential, any number of units can be built. Previously, you could only build a single-family unit or a duplex, despite the fact that that's closest to campus. Now, in this area that's closest to campus, you can still build the single-family or duplex if you want to, but you can now build as many units as you'd like to. There's no longer a maximum. Final major change we've made is the reworked parking requirements. So the current parking requirements are based on the size of the residential units, like in square feet, which has resulted in a lack of parking in the Center City area. We now require for bedroom, or for units with three or more bedrooms to have one parking spot per bedroom, and for units with one or two bedrooms to have, or for studio units, to have half a parking spot per bedroom. So we hope that these requirements will provide enough parking for residents while also offering incentives for building more units with fewer bedrooms per unit. And so then finally, we have some other changes, and these aren't minor, they're just not, they're not quite as large as the other changes. So the detached frontage and ancillary structure can now be as tall as the primary structure, and so that's the single-family area. And previously, it required for ancillary structures to only be a maximum of 18 feet in height, and that's different from our general single-family rule, which is that they can be as tall as the primary structure. And so we didn't really understand the discrepancy there. It was pointed out by the committee that there's a, that 18 feet's kind of an awkward height. It's hard to build something that's 18 feet tall, especially like a garage apartment or something like that, and so we wanted to allow for a little more leeway there. Now, all exterior walls must meet the finessration requirements, as building code allows. Currently, we only require a certain amount of finessration on the front, but right now in the, in this area, while, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of structures going up with, you know, maybe a single-family house next to them as the area is changing, where, you know, you'll see a lot of blank walls, or mostly blank walls, because there's no requirement for finessration. And so, and that's very, that's very visible from the street because, you know, they might have a shorter structure next to them. And so we wanted to now require for the rear and side walls to have more finessration. We clarified the triggers and non-conforming structures and uses. This was primarily done by legal, and Beth could probably speak on this better than I can, but it really, I think it's done a lot for, I think it will do a lot once we start administering this code. It should help us a lot with the, just the everyday things, because, I mean, a lot of questions we get are regarding these non-conforming structures. We added or amended 38 definitions, and that's, a lot of that is to kind of separate this code more from the zoning code, so that when the zoning code is updated, we don't have to update the Center City code every time. The Use section is now categorical and no longer has references to zoning code, and that was for the reason I just stated. So basically, yeah, if uses are added to the, well, you know, so the zoning code has a lot of uses that are very, very outdated, and frankly, that's somewhat of an outdated way to handle uses. So we've changed it now to categorical, so, you know, it can handle any type of commercial, it can handle any type of residential. It doesn't have to meet the certain uses that are listed out. We've now made parking lot design up to the discretion of the developer, so we're really going totally hands-off on parking lot design. They still have to have a certain number of, you know, like we said before, they have to have a certain number of spots, and those spots have to be either eight and a half by 18 or not, or, sorry, eight and a half, yeah, eight and a half by 18 or eight by 19. But they, those can be in any configuration, they can be totally tandem, which is what a lot of the developers are already doing. But so we basically wanted to allow, because we're increasing these parking requirements, we don't want to totally decrease density in this area, so we want to allow for developers to really, you know, still fit as much on their lot as they can. We've now required that storage tanks must be screened on at least two sides, and so there'd been an issue in the past with these large water storage tanks that are very visible from the street and just really don't go well with the character of the neighborhood. Those will now have to be screened on at least two sides. The idea there is for the, those to be recessed into the building, and this was the best way we could think of doing that. It doesn't necessarily have to be recessed, they could be, have a fence around them, but the idea is to be recessed. Then finally, sidewalk removals must have plans for an immediate replacement. And so that's, that had been an issue where developers would take out a sidewalk when they first started developing a lot, and then they would not replace it for the, you know, six to nine months that it took them to develop on the lot. And so, and that, you know, that can be a really big problem in that area. So we definitely wanted to fix that. And so then there was one more change that's not on here, and that's regarding the stormwater requirement. So now, if, so how the stormwater works in this area is, and the impervious coverage is that we allow, generally, we allow for developers to cover 65% of their lot with impervious coverage, and then they can go up to 85% if they provide engineered solutions that account for the first inch of rainfall. And so now we're requiring for those, for the developer to submit a maintenance plan for those engineered solutions, so that we know that things like, you know, pervious pavers or things like that get maintained over their life, so that we don't, you know, we aren't increasing the stormwater runoff in the area. And so really, that's all I have. Thank you, and myself and the rest of the planning staff are available for questions.
Thank you. This is an opportunity, or, sorry, any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing no questions from council, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
We do.
Do I have to follow the rules where I tell you my name and my address? So Autumn McMan, 416 West Yuffalla. Thrilled to be here with you today. I not only grew up within the Center City Form-Based Code, we live there currently. If you drive by, I apologize for what our house looks like, because we are remodeling it. It's going to look fantastic, I promise, when it's done. Right now, it does not. We also own several properties in this area. I have served on the Center City Form-Based Code Development Review Team as the community representative since its inception, and have now served on two of the three rewrites or original creations of this code. Deeply invested in this area based on my family, my parents live three doors down, as well as financially, as well as as a member of this community. What I believe we have done with this rewrite of the code is do exactly what our goals were when we set out, which is to streamline the process, to make it easier to enforce for staff and for the committee. I also believe that this has gotten us closer to our goal of creating more diversity in this part of town, specifically creating more middle housing, and as Logan so eloquently said, specifically as we get closer to campus, which is a little bit higher density. Our goal from the beginning has been to increase density. I'm really, really proud of what we've accomplished here. I also think that the work that legal has done on this, to clarify the definitions, to make sure that what we have written is truly what we're doing to enforce, really makes it a lot easier for the committee to enforce, and I think this is exactly the direction we want to go. As a committee member, this makes it, in my opinion, much, much easier to enforce. This reinforces our goals for this area, and I think is a really great investment in Norman. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I don't see any questions, but I'll be the first to say thank you for your service and for your investment and commitment to Cor Norman.
Back at you, Mayor.
All right. Any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall.
Of course there is. So this has been a work in progress ever since we passed the original Form-Based Code, which was adopted on May 21st, 2018. The code itself was the result of several years of community engagement with the following purposes: to create a pedestrian-oriented and multimodal district, promote, create, and expand housing auctions, stabilize and strengthen mixed-use commercial centers and residential neighborhoods, ensure transit-supportive and transit-serviceable development, capitalize on public investment in existing infrastructure, and ensure a complementary relationship with the surrounding neighborhoods. This code, from the very beginning, was meant to be examined and amended from time to time. The first ad hoc committee met in 2019 to recommend amendments to the Form-Based Code, which were unanimously approved by the city council on July 23rd, 2019. On December 14th, 2021, the city council passed a six-month administrative delay in Center City to allow city staff the necessary time needed to address over 20 separate issues that needed clarification and simplification to allow city staff and developers to interpret the intention and vision of the code without the presence of conflicting language and conflicting interpretation. On January 11th, 2022, the city council appointed a Center City Administrative Delay Ad-Hoc Committee to address 23 separate areas and recommend changes. Out of those 23 items, 21 were successfully addressed and are being presented to all of you tonight for final approval. Cor Norman, and particularly the Center City Form-Based Code area, will continue to grow and evolve over the years. It will be necessary for council and staff to reevaluate the direction of this area of Norman. Future ad hoc committees will be needed, including discussion on several issues that were left unresolved for lack of time, but certainly not for lack of effort. I want to personally thank the members of the ad hoc committee that volunteered their time and expertise and were willing to meet 11 times since January 28th. Richard McCollum, Jim Adair, and Councilmember Holman not only served on this committee, but were on the original steering, on the original steering committee, and also served on the 2019 ad hoc committee. Keith McCabe and Autumn McMan and I served on both the 2019 and 2022 ad hoc committees, and Councilmember Peacock added his expertise this time around on this ad hoc committee. The success of the work of this committee would not be possible without the extraordinary efforts and work product of our city staff, who devoted long hours and energy between weekly meetings so that we could continue to move forward at what I would describe was a blistering pace. Heartfelt thanks go to the planning staff, Jane Hudson, Anna E. Starr, Logan Hubbell, Colton Wayman, Laura Hoggett, and Renee Tromble. Assistant City Attorney Beth Muckler's contributions on perspective in legal matters was essential to the process, and input from public work staff and utility staff was equally important. Hats off to Logan Hubbell for his presentation and his abilities to summarize a complex and nuanced set of recommendations into a digestible format. It has been my privilege to continue to work on improving Center City Form-Based Code, to get closer to the vision of an urban walkable neighborhood that offers multiple housing types that will contribute to create a place to call home for a diverse cross-section of Norman residents. With the unanimous recommendation for approval from the ad hoc committee of all the changes outlined in the revised Center City Form-Based Code, I think it's completely obvious that I will be voting yes on this tonight. And finally, I want to thank Mayor Bria Clark for her bold...
Okay. All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
For her bold leadership during challenging times and for her support for so many initiatives that have been important to me and Ward Four over the last three years. Thank you, Mayor Clark.
Thank you. Okay. The clerk, councilmembers, cast your votes. I tried.
And the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion now to approve or reject emergency section nine.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve emergency section nine. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the emergency section passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 29, adjourning into an executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes under Title 25, Section 307b4 to discuss pending litigation associated with Cleveland County Court Case CV 2022-1692, Amy Serrato Pikeoff OTA et al. versus Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, and as authorized under Title 25, Section 307b3 to discuss the possible purchase of real property located at 3101 Silverado Way. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of city council meeting and convene into executive session. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into executive session. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast. The motion to adjourn out of the council meeting and convene executive session passes unanimously.
Thank you. There are no miscellaneous comments, so we won't be coming back. Just want you all to not wait for us or anything.